I'm going to tell the judge about my family. I'm going to tell them about my family. Cindy Lorien, you're here. I'm going to tell them about my family. I'm going to tell them about my family. I'm going to tell them about the decathlon. And I'm going to tell them about my family. My family is from Shancharia. My family is from Masha. My family is from Kha Lulu. My family is from Yampeshua. My family is from Tawnyar. My family is from Ketsu Ketsi. My family is from Granville Homes. My family is from Hanchi. My family is from Tawitlo. My family is from Baye Monzi. My family is from Community Medical Centers. My family is from Mashtochi. My family is from Tancho. My family is from Fresno Center. My family is from Pantho. My family is from Minyurusis. My family is from Ibisu. My family is from Minyurusis. My family is from Choronge. My family is from Minyurusis. My family is from Napotzi.
The judges will be ready. You can see Michelle with the blue cap right there. And then she will add up all the scores. And we probably won't announce it till the end, right? Okay. And so I just wanted to get the speakers to come in. You just know them as A B C. And so I think they deserve to be known by... What's your name? I said we should just then just introduce themselves so that our judges actually get to know their names as well since they were judging them. So here you go.
Hi, my name is Kylie Blade-Her. I'm a ninth grader at Buchanan High School.
Hello, my name is Jacob Zhang and I represent Saint Ger High School. I'm a sophomore, 10th grade. And my future studies will be in philosophy and history.
Hello, my name is Nuchi Lee and I'm a senior at Clovis High School. I plan on becoming a pediatrician to help bridge the gap between Western medicine and spiritual healing in our home community. Thank you.
And I also think, since we have such honorable judges here, I'm going to ask them to come up. That way they can shake your hands. And if your parents wanted to take a picture of you guys with our esteemed judges, that way we can do that as well. So if you guys are finished tabulating, they can come up and shake their hands. We're just going to steal a couple of minutes just to take a photo with our judges. Since it took so much time to come out here. Once again, thank you for Gia Vann, okay? Dr. Pavu. And Judge, Honorable Judge Paul Laun, Mercedes-Pierce Court Judge. Okay, and we'll come up. We're going to give this time back to Dr. Gia. So we'll wait for four o'clock. No announcement will be made next, okay? Thank you.
I'm going to tell council members about Bonu Tuan. I'm going to tell them about my family. I'm going to tell them about my judges. I'm going to tell them about my family. I'm going to tell them about my family. So I'm going to tell them about my family. I'm going to tell them about President Unified, Mr. Her. I'm going to instruct your superintendent, Mr. Unified.
So I'm a little biased because, you know, I work for President Unified. So while I think the rest of you are great, I tend to, I think President Unified is great. So where is my President Unified kid? Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit of Monglish, English and Mong. So first of all, I really want to take this opportunity. On behalf of the Fresno Unified School District, I want to extend our deepest gratitude and appreciation to the entire committee that put this decathlon together. Especially Dr. Gia and Cindy Lorien. To put something together such as this takes an immense amount of time and collaboration and planning. And for us in United Fire, we are in deep appreciation of this great partnership. So can we give them a hand? And then I want us to thank your teachers because your teachers have been with you here all day. Are there all our teachers? Are you in the room? Can I help you guys dance? And you know what? These people, our teachers, give so much of their time, so often sacrificing their own families for you so that you can have what you have and so that they can be here with you today. And so I really want to thank the teachers, especially... preparing and getting your students ready for this. So thank you so much. And then, of course, you guys, thank you so much for being here today. You know, Dr. Gia asked me to speak today. And I came, I arrived about 10 o'clock. And so I started walking around and watching all of you. And I was going to go home and come back, but I ended up staying the entire day with you. And the reason why I ended up staying the entire day because I was so inspired by all of you. And I just kind of wanted to share a personal story about, you know, why the Mong courses and why the Mong keeping the preservation of the Mong heritage alive is so deeply personal to me. A couple of years ago, I was in the car with my Ben. I have three kids. And my oldest is 19 and he goes to Fresno State. I have a 17-year-old and I have an eight-year-old. And I want to share a story about my middle child, my daughter Grace. When Grace was 13 years old, Grace and I were in the car. And my husband and I were driving and Grace was sitting in the backseat of my car. And she asked me a question and she said, "Mommy, why are the Mong people here?" And she said, "You know, like, I'm born here, but you're not. And you always talk about, you know, Mong and whatnot." And so she started asking me questions. And as she asked me questions, I would answer the question. And then she asked another question. And then I would answer the question. And then she asked another one. And as I answered her questions, her questions got progressively harder. And I found myself in the front seat while my husband was driving. I went on the internet and as she's asking the questions about Mong people and where we come from and who we are, I found myself Googling information because I myself couldn't answer all her questions. And then as I, and then I started getting mad at her. I go, "Gosh, I'm not going to... You guys know kids, you love to irritate your parents, right? And so I answered her last question and I said, I said in a mean tone to her, I said, "Grace, why do you keep asking me all these things?" And then she says something that like shocked me to my core. And she said, "So mommy, so what am I? And who am I? Because I really don't know." And I was reminded of a time when I was...
I'm going to tell you about my family. 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 I'm going to tell you about my family.
Kids of your parents and your grandparents are still around. Whether they are ill, whether they are bedridden, whether they smell, to have one that is alive, it is better than to have one where you only go see the gravestone. So cherish the time that you have with them. Love them. I'm going to tell you about Dr. Gia, Cindy. I'm going to tell you about my family. Thank you. Two types of leaders. One who sits in the back and whips his workers and say, "Move, go forward." One who stands in front with his workers and say, "Let's move, let's go forward." I'm going to tell you about my family. I'm going to tell you about my family. I'm going to tell you about my students. I'm going to tell you about my community. I'm going to tell you about my family. I'm going to tell you about my family. I'm going to tell you about my family. Thanks to all the judges. And lastly, thanks to the students. You took pride in saying, "Although it is a Mong event, I will go. Though it is something which I can easily identify and it is a Saturday and it's only a month away, I will participate." Because it is me. Because if I don't, then who? And so I thank you for coming. I'm going to tell you about my family. I'm going to tell you about my family. I'm going to tell you about my family. Parents who took this from Laos to the land of America is Mong's greatest generation. That is a generation on welfare who started businesses. That is a generation that know English, but had valedictorians as children. That is a generation where one person says something and everybody listened. That is a generation that lived in apartments, but filled the houses every time they had a meal. We are the generation of new homes, BMWs. I fear we may not have the leadership that they have. But with today, with events like this, I think we have a lot of hope. Every time we go to the swap meet, what do we do? We buy something. Those are the poorest vendors. We bargain. And we bargain and bargain and bargain until they give in. Yet, when we go to the richest restaurants in North Fresno and they charge us for a meal, we even add tip that is 15%, 20%, and we don't even ask for a discount. Today is a day which we have to love ourselves. And when the vendors at the swap meet, when the vendors in front of Bingo ask for something, give it willingly. No more bargaining with our parents and our parents vendors. They deserve every tip, every extra money that we give them. That is how we must change. Because we are truly just one race. And the bond between us, because our blood is Mong blood, it runs deep. You can ask the professionals here. When they go to a conference which is in Oklahoma and they look around everybody and you know what? When they see a Mong person, you know what they think in the heart? Mong, y'all. We are spoiled because we see each other every single day. But because we are also Mong, one mistake hurts all of us. I'm going to tell you about my family. At least my generation still goes, "I'm going to tell you about my family." Right? But the Mong mother, the blood, they, the Mong children, because they, they... To talk about my family, young people, don't ever lose that. American Mong are the most prosperous. You are the ones who help Mong across the United States and across the world. I have been waiting for Mong China to give us something and there are millions of them. And they have not yet sent one young to any cause that we have. But I have seen Mong Mikan send, build churches, build hospitals, build schools all across the world to other Mong people. And that is a testament to all of us here. Now, to my family, young people, I have a couple of encouragement for you, challenges. First is, "I'm going to tell you about my family." Starting today, you will not be Shang. I'm not be Shang. Who's be Shang? Who is Lu Taow? No, who is Lu Taow? Teacher, call me Taow. Because that is my name and that is how the Mong say. I'm going to tell you about my family. We can do it. Mong is easy, okay? Li is easy. We have Shang, we have Van, we have Va, we have Ha. We have to do it. But you can lead that change because they call you every day in the row, right? Yeah. But you're, cha, no, no. You need to go, "No, it's za." And it is not cha, it is cha to be unless you're only... It's cha. Let us do that. And when I say that, I think I have to point my finger at ourselves. Those of us in the public spotlight. Misty has an American name, so she gets it easy on that part. But she, we have to be Bonu Tuan. We have to have Paul Laun. We have to have, which you can be first name. This one, Gao Gia. Once we do it, they will also listen. So that is my first challenge here. Say that, demand it of the teachers and also demand it of your friends, okay? Don't go, "Hey, that cool." No, no. "Panku or Paku." Say that, demand that. Second, this one's going to be harder. It involves a lot of culture. But when we speak to Jemikan, no longer say, "That's white Mong, that's green or blue." They are Mongs, you know? They look at us and they all say, "Oh yeah, that's white, that's green, most striped, whatever." Mongs, and when you say, when you speak it, you look, you go, "Yes, that is a blanket." We have two words for it. One is cha and the other is fa. But it is only one, the Mong. We are Mong and Taow. And all of us can learn both dialects so that we are fluent in it. So say that, let them know. Don't be like us anymore. Next, double one. You can't have PhD, that's you have to men. Like, it's like a dawn knife, right? And so you can have to speak clearly. I'm going to tell you about my students. Oh no, who who are the who Chi? So I'm going to tell you about my family. Now, to the teachers, to the community leaders, to the Lu. I'm going to tell you about my family. I'm going to tell you about my chemistry. I'm going to tell you about my family. Because when I say helium, I'm going to tell you about my family. But she may not know, right? You have to show them, you have to know, right? I'm going to tell you about my family. I'm going to tell you about my family. I'm going to tell you about my family. I'm going to tell you about my instruments. We have names for it. I'm going to tell you about body parts. We have names for it. When we are in the legal system, we have every word to cover everything. Next, they have to expand their vocabulary. I'm going to tell you about my family. You go to, "Stole it." Or, "Yo, yo." I'm going to tell you about my family. You can't. Too bad. Not only that, I'm going to tell you about the consonant R. I'm going to tell you about my family. I'm going to tell you about my family. It's a very expensive vocabulary. Lastly, I have to tell you about Lu. Now it comes to, I'm going to tell you about my family. I'm going to tell you about Lu, especially among studies program. I'm going to tell you about my family. I'm going to tell you about my family. We have to go build that. And the Armenian Studies Program is a prime example of what we need to do. So we can share about the genocide that happened to us. So we can share about our contributions to history. So that way it is lasting and so that way you can be more proud. I'm going to tell you about my family. Couple of words for you, you, before I end. There's this blind girl. She couldn't see a thing. And she had a boyfriend that loved her, loved her so much. She said, "You know, if I can see, honey, I would marry you." He goes, "But you're beautiful already. Let's get married." "No." He knew it, he went to down there. Eyes for her. I'm going to tell you about my family. Wow, such a beautiful world. He had a boyfriend, you know, I thought, "Will you marry me now?" She looked at him and she said, "I'm going to tell you about my family." I'm going to tell you about my family. Take care of my eyes. I should be saying in English, huh? Don't think that just because they don't know English, they don't know about life. That gray on their hair, the calluses on their hands, the scars that they have went through, they know more about life than you will ever imagine. So talk to them. Be with them, spend money on them, care for them. Me, you guys are descendants, are seeds of leaders, of great people. But as a seed, and many of us here are farmers, you're going to have to put it in the soil. And when you put it in the soil, you have to cover it up. And as you're growing, it's going to seem dark, just like that seed. But when mom and dad put water on it, when the teachers put water on it, that's when the magic happens. When the sun shines on it, when you think it's the darkest, that's when you will grow. That's when you will sprout. That's when you will become what your parents have always dreamed and have always known in you. And so always, always remember, you come from good roots. Martin Luther King said it best. He said, "Whatever you are, do your best." He said, "If you're a street sweeper, sweep it like you're sweeping it for the king. Sweep it like the best violinist is playing in front of the symphony. Sweep it like the angels are looking." He said, "A people may say, 'This is the best street sweeper in the whole wide world.'" Whatever you choose in life, do it your best. Give it your best. So that way they will go, "I'm going to tell you about my family." I'm going to tell you about my family. Young people, if you are the smartest room in the room, the smartest person in the room, you are in the wrong room. Get in a room with smarter people. If you're the richest, you're in the wrong room. If you're the brightest, in the wrong room. Always challenge yourself and go. And be willing to make the sacrifices to get to your dream. And sometimes, we forget how powerful you are in the seed inside of you. A man walked to a circus and he saw a big old elephant and the feet was tied to a tiny little pole on a rope. And the elephant would not move. And he asked the caretaker, "How come the elephant won't just break it?" They said, "When the elephant was a baby, he tied it to the pole." And it's conditioned to believe that it can't move. Some will condition you to make you think, "I cannot be the next president. I cannot be the next millionaire. I cannot be the next superstar." But don't you believe that. You are that elephant and that rope is no challenge to you. You can break it like that. And you can move forward. I conclude with this story. I wanted to say it to the kids so they remember that she always loved the parents. I don't have to say it in English. So we live in villages. And the young people are starting to grow. But there's always the wisest man in that village. And so they always wait for him. Everything, whether there's sickness, whether there's a decision to do something big. And finally, as the young people grew, they said, "You know, we got to make that old man mess up. One of us has got to lead now." And so they gathered together, the young people. And they said, "We have an idea. Hey, let's go meet him. But we'll carry a butterfly in our hands. And we'll ask the old man, 'Do you know what I have in my hands?' And the old man will know for sure. He'll say it's a butterfly. But here's the kicker. When he asks, 'Is the butterfly alive or is the butterfly dead?' We'll ask him that. And if he says it's alive, I'll crush it and then I'll open my hand. And if he says the butterfly is dead, I'll just open my hand and let the butterfly fly away." Excellent, great idea. So the man in the meeting with the elder, the elder said, "Come in." All the people came in.